Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thanks Laura. Good evening. Welcome to the November 23rd, 2020 meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Henry, do please call the roll.
Mr. LaFron. Present, and thank you for the pronunciation. Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Henry. Okay, we have a couple sets of minutes to approve tonight. First set being from October 19th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Oh, yes. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Oster, and I have second.
Second.
Okay, that was Mr. Darpino, right? Okay, corrections, changes, comments. I just like to point out, I believe those were the, those were the minutes that were updated. Yes, they were the minutes that were updated earlier today. The ones online were also updated. They were, the minutes themselves were the same. There was just the addition of the letter from Mr. Fromowitz was attached, which we said we were going to attach. So those are the minutes. I do have one change, and I think Ms. Gold also mentioned it. On line 77 on page two, we talked about the past Chair, Chairman Hendricks who passed away. His name is spelled incorrect incorrectly. It's Hendricks with a D-R-I-C-K-S versus R-I-X. Just like to have the record straightened on that. Otherwise, I have no comments. Does anybody else have any comments or changes on the minutes? Okay, hearing done. We'll accept the, signify by saying aye if you accept the October 19th, 2020 minutes. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing no one opposed, we'll accept the October 19th, 2020 meeting unanimously. Move on to the November 9th, 2020 meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Okay, that was motion by Mr. McPartland. I have second?
Second.
And second by Mr. Oster. Thank you. Any corrections, changes, discussion on those minutes? I have no comments. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the November 9th, 2020 meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any, any, yeah, thank you. Anyone opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I should abstain. I was, I didn't attend the meeting.
Okay, abstaining from, Mr. Scrubby Tennis is abstaining from the November 9th, 2020 meeting minutes. Thank you, Mr. Scrubby Tennis. Okay. Seeing no one else opposed, with that comment, we'll accept the November 9th, 2020 meeting minutes. Thank you, everyone. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move the privilege of the floor. Laura, just check in with you. Did you have any emails or anybody that want to speak of privilege of the floor?
I just double-checked while you guys were doing the minutes, and I do not have anybody.
Okay, okay, we have no one for privilege of the floor tonight. And we have, under next item on the agenda, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. So we do have, under new business one resolution tonight. That's resolution 2020-35. The resolution for site plan approval of three portable storage units at 2861 Troy Road. That's the Brookdale Senior Center. Again, the resolution's been posted, but I'll summarize. Resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code in previous site plan approvals, and hereby, and therefore hereby approves this site plan with the following conditions. One, three storage pods shall be approved in this location for up to one year from the date of this resolution, at which time, if the need for storage continues, the applicant shall return to the planning board to review more permanent storage options. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Oster, and I'll, I'll second that. Make it easy. Any discussion at all?
My only question was, I mean, have, was there any reason to think, because I know they sent the pictures from what people could see through the neighborhoods, and I mean, again, it seemed fairly innocuous, but I didn't know whether there was any reason, any comment that we would have received from any neighbors about it.
Yeah, it wasn't a complaint. What happened was they actually had a building permit out for a pod prior to COVID, because I think that they were doing some kind of an interior renovation. And the building inspector went just to do a final inspection to close the pod permit out, and noticed that there were a couple more, you know, and I think that, like Clark did a really good job finding and working back and forth with them, because they were kind of like on top of COVID. Now you're giving us a hard time about extra pods. But I mean, really don't have to apply the code fairly. There was no complaint, but there was a follow-up from a, you know, just a standard, regular, run-of-the-mill bombing question that noticed them, sort of trying to just make sure that it's documented, and that we're taking fair and appropriate steps to make sure that we meet the same laws that everybody else does.
Their, their proposal description just led me to one small question. These are strictly for storage of clean PPE, right? They're not putting any garbage or waste in those pods, right?
No, Jengis, I specifically asked them that, and they said, absolutely. There, it's just for storage of materials they have not used yet.
Okay, yeah, so, so Clark, you probably saw exactly the same thing I did that made that question, that begged that question, right?
Because I said, I knew people would say, well, why don't you just have the garbage picked up more frequently? So it's absolutely storage of unused items.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
The applicant mentioned whether or not the storage units are locked.
They did not. They did not. I don't know if we could tell from that picture or not. I didn't notice that.
I couldn't.
Okay. We could follow up with that, sure.
Yeah, you know, it might be something to consider if it's not being done.
Yeah, I mean, that's for their own benefit, right? You don't, they should have those locked.
Laura, did anybody from the applicant or representative, did they call in at all? Do we have anybody online?
I was just checking the email. I wasn't able to test a connection with them, but Clark had mentioned to them that they could call in, but I don't see them.
All right, does the board have any other comments or questions?
So Laura, in the ordinary course of business, will you calendar this matter and just have a tickler in your file, and you'll go to them in a year from now?
Yeah, it would still lead to a building permit, so the following the site plan approval, it would go to a building permit, which expires in a year. So it'll automatically go into our system to expire within a year, and at that time, they would get a letter that says that they have to take the next steps. You know, I don't know if Clark, you mentioned to them that, you know, we only put the approval in for one year, but that was kind of consistent with what we talked about before, like trying to be sensitive to the fact that COVID is kind of an unusual circumstance, and you may need a little bit extra out there, but we don't, we wouldn't want to see them permanently there if they really do need the extra space, and maybe, just like, you know, Seraphine or anybody else, like figure out a way to do it more permanently when the world isn't collapsing. We could also extend it, like if in a year, I don't want to say this, but if in a year there's still problems, we could also extend it, and I'm, you know, I'm just hopeful that in a year it should be fine.
Yeah, we all are on that one, for sure. Any other questions, comments?
Do you have any concern, Laura or Clark, with the applicant expanding the, the use of the pods for storage to maybe items collecting outside of, but adjacent to the pods? I noticed there were maybe some loose lumber, maybe some pallets, some wood pallets, sitting in between the pods in the photos that were provided. You know, that's minor, but you know, once you put a few pods down, I don't know, do you, do you think, oh, maybe now we can dump our, our winter salt right next door in a pile next to the, you know, the pods will hide that nicely, or maybe we can locate another trash bin there. I don't know. I guess it's worth reminding the applicant at the very least that, you know, that this, we're granting the waiver for a year to store items in the pod, but anything beyond that would be, isn't, isn't really covered in your, the waiver.
If you guys want to hold on for one second, they did just email me that they're trying to get in, so I'm going to send them the phone number now, and then you could ask them that question directly.
Okay.
Okay, so I just sent them the phone number. They said that they have an iPad, and it was referring them to make an Apple ID in order to don't, I know that iPads don't play that nicely with Google Meet, so I just sent them the phone number to see if they can get in that way.
Okay, we'll give them a second, and it sounds like we have two comments, you know, one comment being, hey, they should lock, lock those, because, you know, PPP, PPE is valuable, and they should take care of that for themselves. And the other comment is, we don't want the trash or storage to start building up around the existing pods, and we can ask them those questions once they connect. But we do have a motion for approval and a second on the floor right now, and so we'll wait for the applicant, and then after that, we'll have Mr. Henry call the roll.
It's kind of your call, Chairman, because we know they're trying to get in. We could maybe go to the next item and then come back to, or we could talk.
I think we should, you know, I mean, those are questions. I think we have a couple of comments from the board, and I think we can go forward with a vote on a resolution, and we can, if we can, if they come aboard, we can discuss that with our questions or concerns, maybe. I don't think we need to have any conditions addressed, though, which is kind of a housekeeping thing, is my opinion, if everybody's okay with that. They're okay with that? Okay, why don't you call the roll, Mr. Henry?
Mr. LaFron.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. The resolution is approved, and for the Brookdale Senior Center. Okay, so what we'll do is move on the agenda. If they call in, maybe we can take a pause, or we can finish the agenda item, and we can talk, right? So next, we have some discussion items. First up being 2207, 2209 Knot Street, the broken-in, the tenant change application that we have. And I know Mr. Darpino is a project lead, but I was going to ask Laura, just to summarize, I know it went to the town board. They had a public hearing, I believe it was Thursday, and a resolution was put on the floor on Friday at their special meeting, which was resolutions only. Now, I guess I'll let you take it from there, Laura.
I'm sure. So I think that, you know, the town board doesn't always like to take action the same night that the public hea, well, essentially, at the same meeting that the public hearing was held. That wasn't, it was one day apart in this case, but it was still actually the same meeting. I think the only reason they didn't move the whole meeting was because the public hearing had been advertised. So, so we have scheduled it to come back on December 22nd, I believe. Let me just double-check that.
Yeah, that's right.
December 22nd, and I, you know, I reached out to them. I think that it's helpful for us to, you know, continue to have good dialogue about the facade and parking, and just get them all the information that they could possibly get, so that they are comfortable taking action on this on December 22nd. I think there was a lot going on with the budget, but if we can get all that information to them, I'm hopeful that we'll have action on the 22nd now.
Okay, thank, thank you, Laura. And Mr. Darpino, you want to take it from here? I know we have Mr. Nicky's online also. I see. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm here. I am quarantined, but available to chime in and answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I think that, you know, not much has changed as far as the, as the plan that we saw, and there were some signage updates. I know that Clark's going to touch on this a little bit later, but I believe you had a call-in meeting with the Architecture Review Board that went, that went really well. And I think the only things that I would comment on at this point is just on the signage. I know that you've got dual facades that you're dealing with, and specifically, the one on Knot Street, I think is fine, as far as, you know, what the intent is to create the theme for the sign. The, the signs that are on the adjacent facade where the soft serve and the entrance is, it would be nice if they could harmonize a little bit better, and maybe if it's a single sign, or somehow to take the same design that's on the front and make it cohesive. I think right now, they just, they're kind of like two separate signs, don't really, they don't really complement each other well. That's about all the, I think the aesthetics were what I had for the signage.
Right, and I might add that the, I believe the, you're going to need waivers, right? Because there's two signs on, on that, on that facade, and the total square footage also exceeds the linear footage requirement, so I think it's three square foot extra sign there. So there'd be, as it's, as it's submitted, there would be a waiver for the sign and size. So it'd be nice, Mr. Nicky, if you could, you know, take a look at those signs and be creative, like Mr. Darpino's saying, but also see if he can reduce it three square, three square feet. If he could do total square footage, if he could do that, then they wouldn't require any waivers by this board, and that's where we always like to be. We like to, you know, we like the submission to be in compliance with the regulations over there.
Yes, sure. The reduction in square footage is not a problem, and in fact, as it relates to Mr. Darpino's comment, what was submitted was in the essence of time, but ultimately, we want all of the branding and all of the aesthetics to match up on both sides of the building. And as I mentioned to the Architecture Review Board, and it's now much more, we've, we've got more time, certainly, because we won't be in front of the town board for another four weeks again, to bring in our sign company to handle this directly, as opposed to doing it through me. I've experienced in quite a few things, sign creation and design is not one of them.
Yeah, no, thank you. So, good, so I get those comments.
Good. I also like, I like the idea of trying to maintain or replicate the awnings that were there. They do help create a lot of depth on the facade, and they're an essential part for the pedestrian access that helps enhance that. You know, there's a current awning where the barber shop entrance was on Knot Street, but even where the three-bay window is on, on the adjacent facade, there could be an awning or something like that added to it that would complement where the signage is. There's, you know, it's, it's a pretty stark facade over there, but a couple simple moves with, I like the, I like the traditional, I forget the names of those types of lights, but they, you know, they, they come out with the heads on them, and they just illuminate the signs themselves. All of that adds a little bit of depth to the facades, and I think that that can help enhance that a little bit.
Yeah, and we discussed that with, with the Architecture Review Board, and so long as it's within a reasonable budget, you know, we're making a sizable investment in the business and in the space. We don't want to do that and compromise our ability to invite people in by not doing something on the outside of the building that, that fits and matches. So we also going to have a conversation, I believe, with the Metroplex at some point moving forward, to see if there's some funding that may be available for the facade through them. Trying to think anything else that I'm leaving out. Did that, I'm sorry, did that answer what you were addressing?
Yes, it did.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think we can get there to signs, just so, you know, a little bit of detail there. One of the bigger concerns that I have, and I know that others also probably also have, is the parking. I know originally, you know, we talked about the co-op parking, and those numbers were used in the parking analysis. I received a letter from Mr. Lang stating that there was 22 parking spots available, irregardless of, you know, the, I guess would be of the co-op. But we don't have a map, so, Mr. Nicky, it would be great if you could take one of those maps that we have floating around, or you have, and mark the 22 down, so it's clear, so we're not trying to figure out what the, where the 22 are, and, you know, who owns those, if they are as an owner, if they are shared, or whether they're in the right of way. We just need to, you know, have that, and we do that for other businesses. We're not, you know, singling you out at all. We've done it for any, anybody that said they have shared parking, you know, we always ask them to identify it.
No, of course, yeah. We, we can easily put a drawing. These, all the 22 spots that Mr. Lang is referring to are all directly in front of his building, his property, either on the Knot Street side or the Clifton Park roadside.
Right, is if, you know, it's this, it falls to, you know, shopping center slash pot, a plaza is what gives you the capability to have the reduced parking for the restaurant because it's shared. If you, obviously, didn't have, or people didn't want you parking in their spots, if they truly do own them, which they're unclear under who owns what, at least I am, if they're unclear, then you'd have to fall back to the 50-square-foot requirement, which puts you at, as you know, 27 parking spaces. You always round up for full space, so that would be 27. So if you, if you're demonstrating 22 that you're sure that you have, and other people or other businesses feel that you shouldn't be parking in your spot, that would still leave you short. So we just need to come through the parking to make sure that everybody's satisfied. The last thing we would want, and I'm sure the town board would want, if we go forward with all the approvals, is that you open up, and then all of a sudden, people are complaining to either code enforcement or town board members that, hey, you know, now you approved this restaurant, and now I can't park, and my business is getting impacted. And I know you would understand that too, Mr. Nicky. So we just want to make sure we got that all laid out.
Sure, of course. And I did get together with the co-op, and they reiterated that they've already sent over a letter recognizing their belief in and strong approval of the project. I'm not paying for them for parking privileges, and as such, there's not a lease or contract to be had, but when I did speak with them, and I did again after your recommendation from the last meeting, they told me again, you know, without solicitation, they sent that letter in approval and support of our project. It's my hope that, given the multiple public forums now, and the fact that I've spoken to all of the other tenants in the plaza, that if someone had a genuine concern in terms of another business, that I was going to, you know, or my business was going to compromise their ability to do business through parking, that they will or would have already said that.
And Laura, did we receive that letter? Is that a new letter? It's forthcoming from the co-op?
Yeah, we received that. It was actually the first one that we received, is the first one that I read into the public hearing.
Yeah, which is nice, and it's great that they did that, but I think it's also very general. It doesn't actually state parking, if I recall, that we understand that, you know, you may use some parking spaces and I don't have a problem. I'm not sure how clear that is. Anyway, again, I don't want to, that's a concern. That's something, you know, we need to work through. Obviously, if you could, if you could firm up, firm this up better before the town board meets again, I'm sure they would appreciate it also.
If I may piggyback on that concern just a little, and you kind of, you kind of hinted at the importance of having a bigger, a more encompassing site plan that shows parking on a map. A picture of the Crescent Park. I notice there really is no delineation of the pedestrians right of way and where the cars should be parked. In a situation like this, at the very least, I think I would like to see maybe a temporary concrete curb that doesn't extend the full width of a parking space, that you might see in a, in a, just a little, a little, a little piece of concrete that prevents a car from pulling into the pedestrian area, especially given the fact that it's the applicant's intention to have walk-up with, so, for, for the, oh, and soft serve.
Yeah, that's something we talked about with Lang's Pharmacy when we did their site plan, right? Same comment about the doorway, making sure people don't pull right up to the doorway, somebody's walking, walking out the door, and some cars pulling in, you know, whether they have valids or curb stops or something. So, so that's, that's a good comment, and, you know, and that's a safety comment, Mr. Nicky, you know, just to make sure that cars stop far enough away, so there's room for pedestrians to go to the takeout window, or walk in the front door, or side door, right? Don't think that's too much.
If not more than the people on this board, I don't want any of my customers getting hit by cars.
You got it. Okay. I know Dave or anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Anything else we need to discuss at this point in time?
Yeah, the only other question I had, going back to the parking, and specifically the co-op, is there, is there co-op's parking lot across the street, or their side parking lot? Are they factored into those 22 spaces, or is it just regulated to Knot Street, Clifton Park, and Crescent?
So the 22 spaces in reference are actually not even all of Knot Street. They are just the spaces on Knot Street that are directly in front of 2207, 2209, and the spaces on Clifton Park Road that are directly in front of that same building owned by the Langs. The other thing I will add to that, recognizing, of course, the difference between seven spaces, 22 spaces, 27 spaces, is that the tenants in the backside of that building on Clifton Park Road, the Alteration Shop and the John's Hair Salon are both closed by the time we open. So none of those spaces are competitive during the times of our operation, if you will.
Okay. All right. Mr. Nicky, do you have anything for us, any questions, or, I mean, it sounds like you're going to be working on signage, giving some more detail on the parking, and taking a look at, you know, pedestrian walkways, and make sure that the parking doesn't potentially interfere with their ingress, egress, to either to takeout window or to the restaurant or bar area. That's what I heard.
Well, I have no other questions. I would always just ask if any, obviously, our operation, things related to parking, public safety, things of that sort, will be affected by the county's plan, and I assume that if there were some changes that had come up since that point, that hopefully I'd be either made aware as a business owner in the area, potential business owner in the area, or, or even just as a resident, but I'm assuming that none of, nothing at least has been ironed out since our last meeting. So, you know, if it were, please let me know. If not, you know, we'll continue to push the ball forward.
Yeah, and that would be Laura or Mr. Henry that would come through the, you know, the building planning department and first. So, yes, I would hope that communicate with all the business owners, any potential changes down there.
Yeah, Patrick had this question, because the town board did actually award a contract to MJ Engineering to do the Crescent, Clifton Park, alleyway intersection and traffic coming in the area. And so, I mean, it is separate apart from this project, but obviously, it has the most impact on the Langs Pharmacy building, because that's where the intersection of Clifton Park and Crescent Road is. So I was just thinking, as you guys were talking, that, you know, we might do like a kickoff meeting where we just like look at some sketches and ideas and get a sense of it, of what we wanted to do, but I think it would make a lot of sense to look at it in terms of like what businesses could potentially go there in the future, and, you know, how we would want to orient that. I think complete streets and everything always wants to make sure that the pedestrian activity is, is there, but like, yeah, like putting a sidewalk alongside the building, adding like curbing, all those things, I think would be something that would want to be included in the plan.
All right. Okay, does anybody, does anybody have anything else for the applicant, or any questions at this time? Okay, I have nothing further. If you don't have anything else, Mr. Nicky, we'll move on. Thank you for joining in tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. All right, Laura, did Brookdale come on the line at all?
I think they did. They're here.
Yes, I am.
Hello? Could you introduce yourself?
Hello. Yes, my name is Chris Nicole. I'm the maintenance manager at Brookdale East Niskiuna.
Okay, good evening. We did take action on, on your site plan and approve the three portable storage units for one year from today. And there was a few comments that came up during that discussion, just want you to be aware of and maybe discuss.
Okay.
And one comment was, question whether or not you lock the pods?
Yes.
Okay. And the pods are used for all new clean material? There's no hazardous or biological waste going into any of the pods?
No, not at all.
Okay. And one other comment we had was, question was, storage of other equipment. So you got three pods that are stacked together and it kind of leaves a good spot to kind of stick things in between. So, you know, just.
Yeah, I got a couple. I got, I got two pallets in between one of them. I will get rid of those tomorrow.
Yeah, we just like to see, you know, it doesn't become a, you know, housekeeping issue because.
I absolutely, I absolutely understand.
Okay. I think I captured all the questions. If I missed something, if anybody else has any questions, they're free to chime in with the applicant. Anybody? No? So it looks like you got your approval for one year. We understand the situation over there, but we're treating you as we do everyone else that has temporary storage units. And hopefully this, at the end of one year, the pandemic is resolved and you don't need the extra storage and everybody's happy.
Absolutely.
And if, if there's a case where that's not, then we'll, we'll work through it again in one year, okay?
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, Clark.
Yeah, and thank you for joining in tonight. We appreciate it. Okay. All right. We'll move on discussion. The next up on discussion is twenty-seven twenty-one Balltown Road, the Aqueduct Animal Hospital, the six-unit multifamily apartment. And that's Mr. DRP now again. And I know we had Mr. Ritmo, the applicant, is on the line also.
Okay, so we received some actual scaled plans that show the, the first drawing shows the outbuildings that are coming down. And then the second drawing basically shows the, the site improvements for the paving, sidewalks, parking and location of the dumpster along the landscaping that goes along Balltown Road. So I think that generally the, the plan is, is really good. I like the bank of parking on the north side. There seems to be ample space over there right now, and that's where a lot of the outbuildings are going to be coming down anyways, just adjacent behind it. And a couple emails that we had earlier before this meeting touched on the location of the dumpster. So I know that the last meeting, we talked about possibly getting rid of the south side parking and not having a double entrance off Balltown Road. But there's, there's a couple benefits to having the configuration that we have here now. The first one is that it does allow entrance to the south side apartment entry. And that would keep people from walking at least across the front of the, across the front of the building where the overhang is, which is, which is a separate apartment. And it would tuck the dumpster off away from the majority of the other parking. So on, on one hand, it does segregate the dumpster. It does isolate it away a little better. But the majority of the tenants would have to go out and around to bring the garbage out and put it over there as opposed to having the dumpster maybe tucked away in the back of the north end of the parking lot. So, so those are, I guess, a couple discussion items I'd like to have other board members give their opinion on if they could.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Dave. I mean, I agree with you. I'm okay with the configuration coming off of Balltown with the, I guess, call it like sort of like a U shape or whatever. There's some advantages, you know, for pulling in and pulling out. But it would be nice that, you know, because that dumpster is, you know, along the, it's in, sort of in the front. I know it's a side yard. It's over near the residential area. It'd be nice if it was at the back end of that parking lot on the north side. I mean, that would be ideal. The only, I guess, one resident would have to walk around with their garbage, right? Who uses that one south entrance? But it seems like it would be a better fit over there.
Can I give my explanation?
Sure.
So I put it over there mainly one, you know, who knows if this is even gonna matter, but smell. So when people are going to their cars, they don't have to constantly smell garbage. And two was for snow removal, because it'd be a lot easier to push the snow to the back of that parking lot. Because originally I was gonna put the dumpster back there, but then realized that pushing snow and getting that cleared would be tough. Also, this keeps the garbage truck, you know, if tenants have to leave or something away from the apartments so they can access and get out at the same time. And I would like, I would wrap it with, you know, some arborvitaries and some black chain link fence or something like that.
Those are good points, Alex. How close is it to, is there a residence, a resident right there to the south of the, yeah, it would be the south of that dumpster? Is it, is it far enough away from the single-family home that's there? I'd have to go over and take a look personally.
Yeah, it's, there, there's a residence over there, but it's a pretty good distance from that, from where the dumpster location is. And there's a lot of heavily vegetated old growth and some undergrowth that's there. It's, it's got a decent buffer. So it's, it's a pretty generous distance that's there. If it has, if it has the fence up that's shown on the dumpster enclosure detail, you know, I, it would, you, you wouldn't see it from, from the neighboring, from the neighboring houses.
Well, you know, I can go, I could go that way too. I mean, it's whatever the, the board thinks and whatever Dave DRP knows recommendation is. I understand, Mr. Ritmo. I can see your point about snow. You can push it straight back on the other side. As long as it looks good and I'm flexible on that. Any, anybody else have any other thoughts?
Can we, can we recap the proposed timeline for demolition and removal of the asphalt and addition of new parking?
Dave, I guess that would be Mr. Ritmo.
Did we talk about a timeline for it last time?
I understand. I'm sensitive to the fact you mentioned, I think, that the parking would be a two-phased approach. I, my recollection is that you just said mainly it would be more, it would be a little cost prohibitive for you to install all of the thirteen parking spots proposed on the north section immediately.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to rip the Band-Aid basically. And so I'm, I'm, I basically had my engineer draw this plan to hopefully be, you know, the final plan. Rip the Band-Aid. I'll put the thirteen spots over there now and be done with it.
Okay. Okay.
Again, I'd, I'd still keep that south side because I, I want that other DOT entrance for, you know, who knows? Whether I sell the building in twenty years, it, it's good to have rather than close up.
Okay, so, so in summary, you plan on building to the drawing that got submitted?
Correct. This is gonna be a one and done. I, I like, basically, I'm trying to, you know, make it more of what you guys wanted. But at the same time, I'm, I don't plan on, you know, changing it in a year or two to make it go more towards the west or, or the north.
Okay. But that, that's good news, Alex, because, you know, if we have, when we have the resolution for approval, if, if there was gonna be like a timeline of when you were gonna get to it, we would probably have that in the resolution. So you, you know, so you only rip off part of the Band-Aid now. You're gonna have to do the rest sooner or later. So if you, you know, if you could somehow swing it and just be done with it, I know the board and I'm sure, you know, the board would appreciate it and it would be a better looking project quicker. So.
So what are you looking for?
Basically, I think what we're looking for is just the, the site plan that you're, we're gonna approve is you're gonna, you're gonna take care of it. That's what you're gonna do as part of your rehab.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, so what I'm, what I gave you guys is basically what I'm proposing for like a one and done. As long as you guys agree, obviously.
I think we're getting there.
Yeah.
You know, we talked about even potentially having a resolution tonight, but we really didn't get a chance to discuss it at all. Now that we have formal drawings, that's fantastic, Mr. Ritmo.
Now, just so you guys know also, obviously, we're going into winter time, so I don't know if the parking lot work is gonna, you know, go over the winter time. I'm gonna focus more on the inside. And obviously, coming into spring is when that'll be dealt with.
Yep, I understand that. And that's basically a function, right, Laura, the, or Clark, of the building permit and any timelines along with the building permit, you know? Obviously, you don't want the building permit to expire and have to renew it, if there'd be costs associated with that. So. Was it one year, Laura? Is that the magic number?
It's one year, yeah, from the date of the, I mean, Alex actually has two years to be able to even take out a building permit from site plan approval. But I, I mean, my discussion is, Alex, you can jump in here and you can want to start, you know, as soon as you can. So it would be like final site plan approval and then probably building permit for the inside and then whatever you can get done over the winter and then the outside.
Right, so if the property changes hands, I say a month or two from now, when you come in to get the building permit, you have one year from that date to complete the site changes that are required, which sounds like it would be work for you.
Yeah, that should be good.
Yeah, okay. Great. Is there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, Mr. Ritmo, this is not directly attributable to the site plan, but I just have a question about, do you have other multifamily properties that you own and operate?
Yes.
How many units do you have under management right now?
I'm closing on a fifteen unit in Rotterdam in two weeks, and then I have six units in Gildersland.
And that's.
So I'll have twenty-seven total.
Oh, and do, do you operate privately for other, for other owners?
No, just myself.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I guess the only question would be if, if we're good with the justification Mr. Ritmo had for where the dumpster is, I guess we could call for a tentative approval for the next meeting, the site plan. Is everybody okay with that? We just nod our heads or make a recommendation, Dave?
Yeah, I'm good with the current configuration.
The only two points that I had sent Alex and Nate email was, we talked about landscaping to the north of the parking lot because it's a residential lot there and the multifamily code normally requires landscaping along the boundaries of multifamily lots. And the north is just along that parking lot is kind of, it's just a field. So like a little bit of landscaping on the northern of the parking lot. And then the other thing is multifamily apartment units in the code require delineation of open space, which I, I mean, I think, Alex, when you take those buildings down, you have like vast amounts of open space.
Yeah, I have three and a half acres.
So that are, I mean, you probably have like, like, you're supposed to have two hundred square feet per unit, which is, you know, like twenty by what, twenty by ten feet? And you, I mean, you've got like two and a half acres. So, but, so that's on the drawing, so that the drawing is consistent. Like, that's why I sent you those two codes, so your architect can put like two hundred, you know, per unit. And then you can just kind of bubble out behind the building and say like, this is gonna be the rear yard. And we have like, you know, two, a lot for the, for open space requirement.
Okay. They are working on that. I forwarded.
So that would be really nice to have for the final drawing, just so that we're being consistent now that it is allowed to be multifamily, but it's meeting all the multifamily code. And so I checked, because it's got a use variance, so like the, you know, like the distances, the lot lines and stuff, they go along with the use variance. But anything that we can do to make it meet the multifamily code and be consistent with every other multifamily approval we've had is good. And those are the two main things that I saw. So just the landscaping along the north parking lot and then the open space delineation.
That's good. And the next meeting is December fourteenth. So we'll have a resolution for then, Mr. Ritmo. If you, you know, get it in sooner to give us an opportunity to look at it to make sure there's no questions, so it goes smoothly on the September fourteenth, that'd be great, okay?
Okay, yeah.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Ritmo or regarding, oh, I guess we call it the old Aqueduct Animal Hospital here soon, right?
No, I'm just glad that it'll get built to the drawing that's been submitted and it's one-shot, however long it takes. But the plan is to get it done in one shot. That's good.
Yep, yeah, that's good. Real good.
That you weren't gonna do a monument sign, right? Are you just gonna put signage on the building? Are you just gonna put address on the building? I can't remember what you said.
I'm just gonna put an address. I, I've been in a couple of these meetings where I've heard about square footage and TD Bank and this, and I'm not going through that. You guys aren't getting a sign from me, I'll tell you that.
Beautiful golden letters on the front of the building, so people know.
Yeah, I'll wear a T-shirt and jump out front for the first day and that's it.
That would be a temporary sign probably.
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Ritmo. And, you know, signs, well, we have requirements. If you meet the requirements, it's always easy then too, so.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I think I'm good with Zoom meetings for a few months. All right, guys.
Any questions, please contact the planning department and it will be all set, right? We'll have a resolution. Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Okay, now it's different discussion items tonight. And I have reports and I'm not sure, well, we've got a few things under reports. We'll start versus being the architectural review board. I'm not sure if that was Clark or Mr. DRP. I was gonna speak about that. Clark, have you?
Yeah, Dave and I talked and I'm gonna give a quick update. Laura, did you want to pull up just to show what's the evolution of twenty-eight oh four Aqueduct? So just while Laura's pulling that up, the, the ARB has been really busy on some nice projects. Twenty-eight oh four Aqueduct Road is probably the first really big project the ARB has tackled, and it's gone really well. So Laura's gonna show where that started. And we just had a call on the eighteenth, which was the second video conference call that we had. And the ARB is very happy with where the project stands right now. They've also worked at, okay, so we'll, we'll kind of jump to that right now. So if we, I think we'll just start with the picture of the site to remind everyone what it looks like from the road. So that's the current building, Matia Restoration. Then there's the, we call it the gingerbread Swiss chalet sketch that Laura likes. That's where it started. So that was Mr. Matia's sketch of what he wanted to do. Then we'll just jump to what it looks like now. And this is a combination of the ARB and he did work with an independent architect, but the ARB has interacted really well. So you can see the front facade there in the upper right. You know, it's, it's really looking nice. He, I don't believe he's gonna require any kind of zoning variances. It's all within the allowable code. Probably the big, the relatively new addition is the addition of that little deck or that fairly substantial deck on the right. So the ARB contributed a lot to that in the general look. So it, it's really looking very nice from the outside. And again, the members of the architectural review board have given a lot of nice feedback on this. The main thing they're working on right now is potentially having that deck set back a little bit from the front facade so that it's not too imposing from the street. So that's their big project. They've also been working with Joel Bissalian on twenty-six twenty-seven Troy Road, the old Krieger House. One of the ARB members has done a walkthrough of the house and we're scheduling a second visit for, for any other members that want to see that. Joel has indicated that he's most likely going to sell that house without re, restoring it himself. So we will hope to work with the new purchaser of that property. They, as we mentioned, they've looked at the twenty-two oh seven, twenty-two oh nine Knott Street and added some comments to add some more depth to those facades. And, you know, we've kicked around the idea of maybe a, trying to pursue a Metroplex grant at some point to do something to the facades of all the buildings in that co-op plaza. They've also worked with Joel on the Kelts Farm project. We've had a couple sessions just looking at what his renderings look like for that development now. And we're staying engaged with him as, over the winter, as that progresses forward. So he's been really good on several projects. The, the other big thing that we have on our agenda is just to update the town's website to get knowledge of the ARB out there more. So we, we envision having a webpage just like the building department has, so that you'll be able to see, you know, we'll put twenty-eight oh four on there as a case study and just get some more word out to residents on what the ARB can do for you. So we're off to a good start.
Fantastic. Great. Thanks, Clark.
I just want to comment, working with Clark, coordinating time with the ARB has been very, very helpful. You know, in the instance of the client I was helping, he was open to ideas and he needed them. But the Juliet balconies and the idea of the staircase being less, less, less intrusive or less visually unappealing, just had a lot of great feedback that was, that was very helpful guiding this applicant through the process.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to take the opportunity to specifically thank Clark for spearheading a lot of these meetings. He types up some fantastic summary emails after. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to attend the last couple of ARB meetings, but the couple that I have been on. meetings, but the couple that I have been on have been really, really good. Joel's been very receptive to it and it's, it's really what I envisioned as an, as a great asset as another committee to the town and to the residents and, and developers here. So uh, again, Clark has been doing a fantastic job and I just wanted to relay that to the rest of the board.
Well, thanks, Dave, but it's, it's the uh, the architects are doing their real work. Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, David, and thank you, Mr. Henry, for your, uh, your help and support as always. Okay, um, next we have
Just for um, the Alex Ritmo, um, old Aqueduct parking, I think is, if like we're happy with the footprint of the parking lot, which you know, like generally speaking, I think the whole thing would look nice in the north, but if we're, you know, balancing or compromising and coming to the, you know, that it, it, it's going to look good. Um, and then it does serve that one unit that's on the, the left side of the building. Um, I think the only condition that I would probably propose for that resolution was that that building at least go through um, architectural review board at least once to have them look at whatever um, material he wants to put on the facade. You know, I think he said cultured stone or something. Just to have him look at it once. So I'd probably put a referral to the architectural review board on the Aqueduct.
Seems reasonable. It's advisory board, right? I mean, uh, you know.
Well, they are, except like when you guys approved um, the Matia one, you approved it subject to them approving the final Matia. Uh, you know, so you, you can kind of delegate the final facade approval to them.
Yeah, well, well, you know, the thing we always got to watch, you know, in concern is somebody like Mr. Ritmo, cost, right? You know, so they got to balance costs with, you know, aesthetics too. So we got to be careful. Um, that uh, we don't end up breaking the bank of an applicant. And I don't think that's the intent. Obviously the intent was to help with the architectural review board. So, so I don't have a problem um, with his uh, design being reviewed personally.
So just, yeah, just referring to it, to them. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Uh, so the twenty twenty one meeting dates were included in our packet. Um, usually we take a look at that and I know Ms. Gold's pretty good at that too, about whether there's any conflicts. Um, yeah, I'm, generally I'm fine with the dates. Did anybody see any concerns or have any concerns? Just want to get rid of twenty twenty and go right to twenty twenty one.
Yeah, I did a preliminary check against the Jewish holidays and, and didn't see any conflicts.
Okay. And again, if uh, something comes up and we need to modify, add more meetings or or we have a light agenda, need to postpone, we can always be uh, flexible at any time. So in general, we're okay with the um, the twenty twenty one's schedule?
Only thing on there is the early voting. So we don't want to have the dates for the early voting. Um, but everything else I think we can hopefully got on there and plan for and can change if you guys need. So, um, we, we are hopeful to get the early voting on it before your December meeting and then you could, you know, could you vote on them? Um.
Laura, the only thing I'm not sure about is that we're going to be um, updating all employees to give June, we're going to make Juneteenth uh, townwide holiday where you don't have work. And so I'm not sure if that will fall on a Monday or Friday. Cause it's a weekend. So if it's on the Monday, then we'd have to figure, just push that meeting, but we'll figure that out.
For December fourteenth too, so that we'll have the final schedule for you guys. But we just wanted to see if you had any comments on the proposed dates.
All right. Do we need to take any action on that tonight, Laura? Or are you okay with the feedback that you just let me see?
Very good. We usually take action in December. This is your first heads up.
Okay. All right. All right. So we had some information about, is it uh, the June date? If it, it is a conflict, we can move it. And uh, we can, we can uh, vote on it uh, next meeting. Right? And then that brings us to COVID nineteen updates.
So um, Supervisor Syed issued a proclamation um, declaring a local state of emergency in the town of Muscuna, consistent with Schenectady County and the town of Glenville. Um, it, she closed all town facilities for the most part to the general public. And we're working right now on work, you know, pushing as much as possible our, our employees to remote work schedule or, you know, building department will be uh, I think it, every other day, remote in person. Um, it doesn't really impact the planning board in so much as I think the general consensus was to remain remote until basically Governor Cuomo stops issuing and extending those executive orders allowing remote meetings. But in her, um, I mean, in so much as you guys wanted to do in person meetings, in her proclamation Supervisor Syed directs every meeting to be held remotely until further notice. So it doesn't really impact us, but like, once again, I'll just say a reminder, if anybody's having, you know, technology issues or feels like they don't have the tech that they need in order to participate fully on these meetings, uh, email Laura or I and we can work with you to make sure that you have what you need.
Great. Thank you. And I think, uh, you know, board has been doing a great job, uh, and staff. Thank you, everybody, uh, for getting through this. Good job. Anything else on COVID nineteen? Any questions? Okay. I have none either. Um, nothing just the commission business. Move right along tonight, huh? So, Mr. Ross, so you got anything for us tonight?
Only just a question and maybe it's more sort of a something for a future meeting. I mean, obviously we, you know, probably all you saw of the weekend that, that Costco location was rejected by the, or they, they overturned the decision by the planning board and maybe can criticize the planning board's following seeker. I'm curious, are there any lessons from that that we need to think about based upon that decision? And again, it's not necessarily a lesson for today, but you know, it's
It's always a good point and a good reminder. Um, I think that seeker, if you're going to lose on process, it's pretty much where you lose when you have cases because the seeker, you know, process is very complicated. Um, it requires a lot of paperwork and coordination and timelines. So, um, you know, and, you know, you guys, I think you guys all kind of know the article seventy eight, the two standards are either you, you didn't follow the process or you're arbitrary and capricious. Um, and so like, they don't really weigh in on whether or not, you know, they feel like the planning board's decision was good or bad. It's just process or consistency with the way that you've applied, you know, kind of like precedence or whatever else you want to see. But it's always a good reminder. Kevin brought that up with me today and it's always like a good reminder to go make sure you check your files and that you've got your seeker going and then you have all that paperwork in there. So, yeah. It's always a good reminder.
Yeah. Well, there was a reference to the, about the fact that there was conclusory, they sort of like they use conclusory statements. They didn't really actually come up with facts and figures. And again, it was knocking a decision that had been made in favor of something, not the reverse is what we've seen sometimes where, you know, we are being arbitrary and capricious by, in not approving something. And so, but I, yeah, because I just assume other towns also kind of use independent uh, engineers to like, kind of provide, you know, kind of a back and forth to make sure to validate some of the things that are being said or to kind of highlight shortcomings. So that's why it was interesting in the sense that it was something getting thrown out for not providing enough evidence as opposed to the flip side when it gets thrown out. It gets thrown out. We didn't, it get, the decision gets thrown out because they reject it for not enough evidence.
Yeah, it is interesting. Keeps us on our toes.
I have to read up on that. Thank you, Mr. Ross. I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. DRPino?
Uh, nothing, sir.
Okay. And Mr. McPartland?
No, I, I wanted to commend uh, David and you and Clark and Laura on the progress that the ARB has made. I'm, I'm really impressed by that. And it seems like the plan for Mr. Matia's um, business and, and home there is going to be that, that will be a shining uh, initial project example of what can, what's possible. So.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Beautiful. Anything else, Mr. McCarly?
No, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Khan?
Nothing for me, sir.
And Mr. Scribby Tennis then?
Nothing for me.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. And Ms. Gold?
Nothing. Thank you.
Yeah, she is. I know she's out there somewhere. And Ms. Enfield. Okay, nothing from Ms. Enfield. And I have nothing except for the same things, Mr. McPartland. Everybody have, uh, enjoy your Thanksgiving and be safe. And uh, catch you next time. So um, with that said, I'll take a, a, a motion to adjourn. And Mr. Khan, a motion to adjourn. Now, go have a second.
A second.
A second by Ms. Laflamme. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. No, no one opposed. We'll adjourn the uh, November twenty third meeting at eight oh one. Thank you very much, everybody. It was a quick night. Appreciate it.
Have a good, safe, healthy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Mr. Khan.